Okay, Chair Mercado, we are ready to begin the meeting.
Okay, Chair Mercado, we are ready to-
Thank you, Rafi. Okay, welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Tuesday, May 12, 2020. This meeting is now called to order. And I request if staff can please take a roll call of the commissioners present.
Sure. Commissioner Davidson. You're unmuted.
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Lockren.
Present.
Commissioner Lubberski.
Present.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Present.
Vice Chair Samuzi.
Present.
And Chair Mercado.
Here. Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? No? Okay. Next, we'll move to the meeting procedures. So due to COVID-19 shelter in place order, we've established a new way of conducting our public meetings. I'd like to ask staff if they could help address for the public how tonight will work.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we are accepting public comments over the telephone and through YouTube Live chat. This meeting is being streamed live by YouTube, where members of the community can provide public comments on the agenda items using YouTube Live's chat at www.youtube.com/cityofSanRafel. We also have the option for community members to attend via conference call at the following phone number: 669-900-9128. And the meeting ID for that is 892-6364-4384. If you are participating by telephone and wish to provide comments, please press star nine when the chair opens the public comment period for the item that you'd like to speak on. Once you press star nine, please wait until you hear a notification that you have been unmuted. Then you will be allotted up to three minutes to speak. If you are submitting public comments on YouTube, please submit your comments by writing "public comment" in all caps and introduce yourself. You will be allotted a 200-character limit on each chat. If you wish to provide more comment, you will need to start a new chat. If you submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the Planning Commission and published to our website. For more information regarding the real-time public comments, please visit our live commenting pilot page at https://www.cityofSanRafel.org/live-commenting-pilot. That's it.
Great, thank you. Okay, let me describe the tonight's meeting procedures. First, we're going to begin with a staff report. Then we'll hear from the applicant. And we're requesting reminding the applicants if they can keep it to no more than 10 minutes. Then members of the public will be invited to speak. We will read any comments they have made on YouTube Live chat. And people on the conference call can speak when they receive the notification that they've been unmuted. Please keep your comments to under three minutes. Commission will then have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or public after each segment. We will then close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and resolution. So next, I want to check if anyone has any urgent communications not on the agenda that they'd like to raise to the commission at this time.
So if there's anybody on the conference call that wishes to provide public comment on a topic not on the agenda, please press star nine now. And then I'll unmute that line. And I'm also looking in the chat box for any public comments for items not on the agenda. We'll give it a couple of seconds here to see if anybody has anything. Okay, seeing none, there are no comments for items not on the agenda.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move to the consent calendar, which has one item. This is the minutes from the April 14, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
This will also work the same way. So if there's anybody on the conference call that would like to provide any comments on the April 14 Planning Commission meeting minutes, please press star nine now. And if you have any comments you'd like to enter through the YouTube Live chat, please enter those now. Does not appear to be any public comments on that agenda item.
Great, thank you. Okay, does anyone on the commission have any comments or edits to the consent calendar? And if none, then would anyone like to make an entertaining motion? To approve.
Moved improvements. Second by Davidson.
Was that Commissioner Lubberski?
Yes.
Great. Okay. We have a motion and a second. And Ali, would you please take roll?
Sure. Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lockren?
Yes.
Commissioner Lubberski?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Samuzi?
Yes.
And Chair Mercado?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So now we'll move to our public hearing. Item number one. This is 1499 Lucas Valley Road. Request for an environmental and design review permit to allow the construction of a new 901-square-foot bathroom/ closet addition to an existing 6,500-square-foot single-family residence on an 8.9-acre site, APN 16501089. And if we can please have staff present its report.
Good evening, Chair Mercado, members of the commission. I'm Sean Kennings, contract planner. And I'm going to share my screen. I'll make a brief presentation, and then the applicant's representative, Maureen Yocum, would also like to make a presentation. So I'm going to share a screen, so hold on. Does anyone, everyone see that? Okay, it's 1499 Lucas Valley Road. It's a currently- Make sure it works. There's the project site, 8.9 acres off Lucas Valley Road. Lucas Valley Road is up here in the north upper right corner. The main residential is down here in the lower left corner. There's a riding arena and some equestrian facilities. Genesis for this property was a PD. 1701H was adopted via city council in 1996. The PD was largely to prevent larger sort of single-family lot subdivision. And therefore, it set a maximum development standards. 18,000 square feet total development, 6,500 square foot maximum for residents. They established the property setbacks, lot coverage, and the conditions for natural state. However, there is a provision in the code that allows for modifications to a PD, provided the findings can be made. A modification for this property was approved in 2012 with an extension in 2014 for a crafts room, a theater room, a large detached garage. There are existing entitlements that remain unbuilt, covered a rainy arena and a pool cabana. But largely, this exception is required to allow for square footage above the 6,500 square feet that was established in 1996 for the residents. So this project includes a master bedroom, bathroom, closet remodel addition. It's 901 square feet. The new single-family residential floor area will be 9,400 square feet with a total development of 2,300 square feet. The proposed setbacks still meet the existing requirements. 385 from the front, 20 from the side, 37 from the rear. The maximum height of this addition is 16 feet. And the natural state is 84%, where 34% is required. There is approximately 275 yards of cut for retaining walls to allow for this extension. And no off-haul will be removed from site. It will be redistributed on the side on a hill. And as I mentioned, pursuant to the municipal code 1412040, exception to property development standards require an approval of an exception, which is a resolution attached to the staff report. Should you approve this project, you will be recommending approval of that resolution. Basically, modifications to ensure that the new project meets the standards of Hillside Design Guidelines and that this is the superior design alternative. This project can't be seen from any public vantage point. It takes into account the existing development, and it meets the Hillside Development Guidelines. The DRB approved this project as subcommittee in March due to COVID-19. And again, if you are approving the resolution tonight, you are recommending that approval to the city council for final approval. Really quickly, here's the existing footprint with the setbacks. Proposed addition would be punching it out south. Here's the retaining walls for the cut in the hill. Here's the general layout, master bedroom, master bath, and closet spaces, retaining walls. Here on the left is the existing elevations. Here on the right is the proposed elevations. You can see the small retaining walls. Maximum height of the biggest wall is four feet. And here is the civil and drainage plan with the retaining walls on the local hillside. All the cut from this area would be redistributed here on the hill adjacent to the home. So again, tonight, we'll be conducting the public hearing. You will be recommending approval of the resolution should you approve the project. And you have the decision whether to approve as presented, approve with modifications, continue it, or recommend denial. And I am- That's my staff report, and I'm available for questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Great, thank you. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for staff?
I do. I had a quick question. In the, I guess it's the second paragraph of the executive summary, it says that in order to grant an exception, there's a number of things, but one of the requirements is that the project retains more of the project's site in its natural state. And I'm curious, within the context of planning and what we're looking at, what that actually means.
So there's a natural state requirement. And in the original development standards, it was 34% requirement. And so this project is currently, right now, it's at 85%. 85%, a little bit over 85. And with the new addition, that'll be to 84.8. So it meets that metric by a significant amount.
Okay, so because the way it's worded, so you're saying it retains more of the project site in its natural state than it's required to versus than it did before the project?
That's correct. The requirement is not to build into the hillside or make massive improvements that would otherwise disturb the natural state. It's meant to protect the natural state.
Okay, all right. The second question I had for staff had to do with landscaping. And there is a, I apologize, I'm going to have to go to it. And our- Let's see, okay, so this is, I guess, the compliance with the Hillside Guidelines. And I'm way down on page 33 of our materials. But one of the things it talks about on the hills, let's see. On hill slope habitat area, so this is 4C3. And it's talking about existing vegetation is incorporated into the project design and used to screen development from off-site views. And it's NA, I'm realizing why it's NA now is because there basically are no off-site views because nobody else can see it.
That's correct.
I'm curious why there isn't a landscaping plan associated with this.
I'm assuming it's where the project is located. There is significant landscaping in and around the house. There are some retaining walls and a trellis proposed for outside. So I don't think there should be some landscaping possibly in the- You can see it here in the retaining walls, but nothing else proposed in addition to this. And the applicant can speak to that.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, hearing done. If the applicant has any presentation, we invite them to come up now.
Okay, Rafi has to start my video, but I can speak anyway. This is, I'm Maureen Yocum, I'm the architect. I just want to say a couple- There it goes, hold on. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the design. Clients hired me because they wanted to remodel and enlarge their master bedroom, master bath, and closet. And the existing master suite is a wing off the main part of the house. And so the way I enlarged it for the amount of area they wanted was to enlarge the width of the wing by seven and a half feet and then extend it 19 feet towards the rear property line. You'll notice on the floor plan that I made a clip in the southeast corner because that's where the grade is highest relative to the finished floor. And so by not building to the outside corner there, I was able to, I created this secret garden at interior elevation level to allow, and with the use of a couple retaining walls, to allow some access to the outside and also some normal low-silled windows. Otherwise, the grade outside that corner is probably five feet higher than the finished floor, so that all the windows would be high-silled and it would feel more like a basement in that corner of the bathroom. So by creating the secret garden with those two retaining walls and the slope grade in between, it allowed me to kind of open up that corner to light. And then the third retaining wall, the outermost retaining wall you see, is a maximum of four feet high, and that's to allow access to the rear yard. The house is situated where it's up against kind of a hillside on the opposite side too, built into the hill. And the grade differential is significant on that side. So the only way to access the backyard is through actually a set of stairs. So it was important for the owner to have access to the yard for wheelbarrows or small equipment or whatever. And that's why that outside retaining wall was created, to hold back that hill. And it's like Sean said, it's four feet high, but it also follows the grade. So it goes to a downslope both towards the front of the house and then back towards the back of the house. So at its lowest point is like six inches above grade and then 18 inches at the other end. And in terms of the exterior design, there's not much to say except everything matches existing. I mean, it's hip roof, extension of the existing wing. All the exterior finishes match, the detailing in the cement plaster. So it'll be a seamless design to the existing house. Not much more I can add to what Sean's already said unless anyone has any questions. I can't address the landscape questions that you were asking. So the landscaped part of the backyard occurs on the west side of this addition. So there's actually a fence that happens along the west wall there. There's a deer fence. So everything where we're building is actually natural habitat, grasses and all that. But because we're putting these retaining walls to get that outdoor patio, I just assumed that we'd have some landscaping in between the two retaining walls just so that it's not just plain grass, it's just some natural drought-resistant landscaping. So that's why we don't have a full landscape plan. But if you look at photographs, I don't know if you have access to the photographs I gave, it's all scrub and grasses and there's no, it's all natural. It's all part of the hill that you see even on the photograph on the site plan Sean showed.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant, for the commissioners? Okay. I will then ask if we can open this hearing up for public comment.
So if you're participating by conference call and wish to speak, please press star nine. While I wait for participants to press star nine, I'll also request for any public comments submitted through YouTube. Make sure you include "public comment" in all caps, followed by your name in the comment. We'll give it a second here, see if anybody has anything to add. Looks like we have no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Rafi. We will close the public hearing portion, and I'll bring this back to the commission. If there's any commissioners that would like to comment on this or raise anything, right now is your opportunity. I don't think anybody has any comments, so- If we don't have any comments on this, then- Should we consider- Does anybody want to- Make a motion on this?
I can make a motion to adopt a resolution recommending conditional approval of the application.
Second by anyone?
Second.
Great. Ali, can you please take roll call if we're ready, unless anyone has a comment that they want to raise on this?
Can I confirm, was that Davidson making the second?
No, that was Commissioner Samuzi.
Samuzi, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question of staff. As I read this, this needs to go to city council for approval. So is it that important that we actually, that we at least say what we think before we vote? So I mean, let's assume that we approve it. They, if we don't discuss it, they won't know why we approved it. Or is that not necessarily important?
I think it's more important if you have a dissent or if there's a recommendation for denial. However, if there's something that you would like to have the staff planner provide the city council as part of the reason you- Okay, no. Okay.
Good question, though.
May I just add that also that you would be supporting the staff report and the reasons within the staff report and the findings by voting for it? So that would be your concurrence with what's been written and presented to you?
So I think we had a motion and a second to recommend the project and approve the resolution. Ali, if you want to take roll call, I think we can.
Okay, Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lockren?
Yes.
Commissioner Lubberski?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Samuzi?
Yes.
Chair Mercado?
Yes. Great. And if staff can please inform the public of the appeal rights of this decision?
Sure. This decision is final unless appealed to the city council. Oh, excuse me, this decision is not final. This is a recommendation to the city council. City council hearing will be scheduled at a later date. Notifications will go out before a city council action on this project.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will move on to item number three. And this is 1011/1081 Anderson Drive, the Marin Airporter Transfer Station. Request for a use permit extension and environmental and design review permit extension to a previously approved project for the Marin Airporter Transfer Terminal, five-year lease located at 1011 Anderson. The proposed use permit extension and environmental and design review permit extension would include the installation of 31 trees on the northern half of the site, where long-term parking is currently located, and additional landscaping improvements to be located within two bioswells at the northernmost end of the 2.1-acre sites. And if we can please have staff provide its report.
Sure. Chair Mercado, if I may, I'd like to introduce to you Justin Claparda. He is our- He is our contract planner on this project, has been retained, has been helping us with a couple of projects through the last couple of months, and so he will be providing you the presentation for tonight.
Great.
Okay, so let me go ahead and share my screen. Sorry. Can everybody see that okay? Cool. Okay, good evening, Chair Mercado and members of the commission. My name is Justin Claparda, contract planner, working with city staff to support project review. Tonight I will be speaking about a use permit extension and environmental design review permit extension for the Marin Airporter Transfer Terminal located at 1011 Anderson Drive, and the applicant will make their presentation after this. So through this presentation, I'll provide a brief background of the project, site orientation, an overview of the proposed project before providing you with reasons that staff is recommending project approval. And for this project, we are relying on the general plan and zoning ordinance for this review. So a little background of the project and how it came to be what it is today. The project was approved to the planning commission on April 28, 2015, subject to the conditions that the approval limited the use permit to five years and required installation of more permanent features in the event that Marin Airporter requested an extension of the use permit, including but not limited to landscaping, paving and striping to the rear portions of the property. The applicant has since established the Marin Airporter facility at this location by installing the 1,440 square foot Marin Airporter Transfer Terminal building in the front of the site, installed access, parking and landscaping improvements at the front portion of the site along Anderson Drive, and implemented lighting and parking improvements at portions of the rear of the site. The applicant has not proposed improvements to the terminal structure at this time because they're entering into another short-term lease. However, design features incorporated to the structure by the applicant at the time, including the building awning that runs a length of the one-story modular building, materials and colors used, and the building's elevation to meet the required finished floor flood elevation reflect the commission's desire at the time to give the site a more permanent feel rather than the temporary feel. The proposed project today is as follows. The Marin Airporter requests approval of an environmental and design review permit extension and use permit extension and proposed landscaping and planting to consist of about 3,900 square feet of landscape area located throughout the long-term parking lot that occupies the rear of the site and additional landscaping improvements within the two bioswells located at the northern end of the site adjacent to I-580. The northern edge can be found at the top of the page of the site. Green represents proposed landscaping, gray represents existing site landscaping. Landscaping consists of a mix of native drought tolerant trees, shrubs and ground cover type plantings. The green views into the parking lot can provide a more attractive entry and exit from the rear parking lot area of the site. As proposed by the applicant and required in the 2015 conditions of approval, the drainage swales will be enhanced with additional landscaping material to filter the runoff from the rear of the parking lot. General plan consistency. The proposed use permit and environmental and design review extension maintains use of the site as an active bus transportation terminal with short and long-term parking that remains consistent with the general plan designation of light industrial office. The proposed project would meet the applicable design policies and the project landscaping improvements are proposed as part of the use permit extension and environmental design review permit extension, including adding trees, shrubs and ground cover across the site and are consistent with city-approved landscaping. The Department of Public Works reviewed the project design and landscaping compliance and recommended conditional approval of the proposed transfer terminal landscaping improvements project, finding that the scale of the landscaping improvements are adequate given the temporary nature of the use permit and existing development. Three, the proposed parking lot and landscaping further work to control heat buildup from pavement, reduce air pollution, provide shade cover for vehicles and soften the appearance of the parking lot. The project is also consistent with neighborhood policies, specifically as relates Anderson Drive access industrial area and design improvement. The project would add landscaping to the rear parking lot that would soften the visual impacts of vehicle parking in the adjacent industrial lot, consistent with policy NH102. The project would maintain two existing curb cuts and continue to provide the one-way semi-circular access driveway to the site, consistent with policy NH109. Zoning consistency. The current bus transportation terminal use is consistent with the light industrial office zoning designation for the site and continues the current use of the site for long-term vehicle parking. The proposed project comprised of code requirements related to greening and landscaping because it provides landscaping to screen the public right of away from headlights through the installation of shrubs and additional landscaping within the bioswells. These measures would soften the visible rear portion of the site and create a more pleasant appearance than the current condition. As the planning commission requested and opportunistly provide additional input as part of a future use permit extension, staff is seeking further guidance on the proposed development. The environmental design review and use permit can be extended because the original findings would remain valid and conditions of approval have been implemented. There have been no substantial changes in the factual circumstances surrounding the originally approved design. An application has been made prior to expiration. Given the short-term nature of the lease and the request for short-term extensions, staff has not asked the applicant to provide additional permanent improvements other than a request for the additional trees and landscaping measures that are proposed. Lastly, design review is required to assure that high-quality design of new buildings, landscaping and substantial remodels is achieved. The site is currently developed with a modular building and associated parking lot landscaping. The existing structures at the site are compatible with the surrounding area which contains medium-scale industrial office buildings such as the district, the Golden Gate Bridge Highway Transportation District lot, Marin Santory. The applicant does not propose any changes to the previous designer review approval other than the additional trees, shrubs and ground cover type landscaping. Thus, project plans demonstrate compliance with applicable design criteria in the San Rafael non-residential design guidelines in that the Marin Airporter landscaping and associate improvements would be an aesthetic improvement to the long-term parking area by creating an improved sense of entry into sufficient landscape, trees, shrubs and ground cover plantings that are provided on the central northern half of the site and along the outer edges of the long-term parking area and additional landscaping improvements within two bioswells at the northernmost end of the site. City staff sent out neighborhood notification on April 16, 2020. To date, we have received zero letters from neighbors and one comment from the applicant requesting a change in condition of approval number 11 to state one year instead of three months for implementation of landscape improvements due to economic uncertainty created by COVID conditions. In conclusion, staff recommends the planning commission grant use permit extension and environmental and design review permit extension approval, subject to the attached conditions of approval with a modification to condition of approval number 11 as noted. Thanks. Questions?
Great, thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions for staff? I don't hear any. Oh, there we go. I don't see any. Great. Does the applicant have? Would the applicant like to present anything? Go ahead, please.
Yes, my name's Al Farmwell. Thank you, Justin. Good evening, Chairman Mercado and the rest of the planning commission. I'll try to share my screen here. We have a here we go. Okay, everybody can see it okay? No?
Yes, thank you.
All right, good. Thank you. So I just have a brief presentation, just give everybody a little bit background. I think everybody is new since we first got this approved, except maybe Commissioner Lubomirski. But this is the Marin Airporter. I think most people know kind of who they are and see their buses going back and forth on the highways or they used to anyway. We've served Marin since 1975. We have over 300,000 passengers per year and that saves over 200,000 trips to the airport annually. We also operate and maintain equipment for the Marin Transit, taking care of eight routes and carrying over 800,000 passengers there. This is a viable business member of the San Rafael community. We've had our headquarters and maintenance facility at eight level, just south of downtown. We employ over 120 people with, you know, good wages and benefits. Our our main headquarters is located right next to Davidson Elementary School and we participate continually in the community and community-based events and and other types of community outreach. This is, this is a little bit redundant. This is a picture of the front of the building as it sits today, showing some of the landscaping that we put in five years ago. What we are asking for is, Justin mentioned, is a use permit extension. This is due to the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District. They actually own the property. They've granted us a five-year extension. We've requested more, but that's all they're allowed to give at this point. We're going to install the 31 additional trees. It's a slight variance from the the ordinance. But given the fact that we only have a five-year extension, we feel this is an appropriate addition to the property. The property as it sits today provides adequate fire access that was approved by the fire department in 2015. This is an aerial view of the site, kind of showing the parking layout. The browner areas are the bioswells and biofiltration areas. They are green right now, which I'll show you in a minute, but they're this is the property as it normally kind of exists throughout the year without the overlay of COVID on it. You can see the amount of cars that are parked here and you'll see in some of the pictures that we've taken in the last few days, the dearth of cars that are actually on there. Again, this is the, this is another little shot of the landscaping and the existing conditions. Here are the bioswells. They have nice grasses growing in them and we're going to enhance those with a few trees and other landscaping as the staff report mentions. This is the parking lot looking towards Golden Gate Bridges parking, employee parking lot. Most of the cars that you see in the distance are all Golden Gate Bridge employees' cars. Four vehicles that you see in the front are our cars or people that are currently taking the airport. This, along this line, there'll be some of the trees that will be planted between the two light posts. The next next picture shows the line of, or where the line of trees will be going between the two light posts in this location here. This is, 580 is right behind here. Just behind the fence. This is similar to the picture that Justin showed earlier of our landscape plan and the proposal. And that's kind of what we've, what we asked for tonight is approval of this use permit extension. With me tonight is, at least virtually, is Larry Laporte, who's the president of Marin Airporter and will be here to answer any questions you have. And we appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions for staff or the applicant before we open this up for the public comment? Looks like none.
I have a comment actually that
Please.
First of all, I was on the planning commission when the Marin Airporter moved to the site. I remember it fairly well.
My apologies.
No problem. But also, I mean, having grown up in Marin and living here, you know, I've used the Marin Airporter and my family have used the Marin Airporter about a zillion times. But the fact that we've, you know, we have, have used the Marin Airporter over time, I don't think that that would affect my decision here tonight. And I'm still comfortable making a decision.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners?
I had a question for the applicant. I believe you said that the five-year extension was all you could get, but you would have liked it to have been longer. And I'm curious how long you would have liked it to have been. And if we would expect to see you back again in five years?
Well, if I may, this is Larry Laporte, I'm the CEO of Marin Airporter, and to answer that question, if they would give us a hundred-year lease on that site, we would, we would, we would leap at the opportunity. And all being well, if we're still in business in five years' time, we will be back for a further extension. Provided we can agree an extension of the lease to Golden Gate. But they have some internal issues that prevent them giving it to us for longer than five years at this point, so that's what we can get.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, doesn't look like it. Okay. All right, we will now open this up to public comment. Sarah Rafi, if you could help, thank you.
So if you are participating at home by conference call and wish to speak, please press star nine. While I wait for any participants, I will also request for any public comments submitted through YouTube to be made now. Make sure to include "public comment" in all caps at the start of your comment with your name and then followed by your comment. So we can just give that a minute here. And I'm not seeing any public comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think I'll turn this back to the commission and we'll close public comment and see if there's any discussion or items, any issues any of the other commissioners would like to raise. And if I see none, then I'm, I have no comments on it. I would be open to some entertaining if somebody's ready to make make a motion reminding that we have a modification to condition number 11.
I hope that we approve this use permit extension with the modification that the timeframe in number 11 be extended from three months to 12 months past occupancy.
My second.
Great. No discussions on it? Okay. Ellie, if you could please take roll call?
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Locken?
Yes.
Commissioner Lubomirski?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Samutzi?
Yes.
Chair Mercado?
Yes. And if staff would like to please inform the public of the appeal right?
Okay, this decision is final unless appealed to the city council within five business days ending Tuesday, May 19 at 5:00 PM. Anyone wishing to appeal this decision should contact the city clerk by email at the email address is lindsey.lara@cityofsanrefel.org. That's spelled L-I-N-D-S-A-Y dot L-A-R-A at cityofsanrefel.org or by phone at 415-485-3066. And you can make arrangements for filing an appeal in that manner.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to the team and Justin.
Chairman, may I just say thank you as well to the, to the commission and to the staff for their professionalism in handling this matter. Chairman, I'd just say thank you as well to the, to the commission and to the staff for their professionalism in handling this matter. We're very grateful for this decision and mention also that we are still up and running. We're running an hourly service, essential travel, so if you need to get to the airport, Marin Airporter is here for you.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll close that item out and we will now move to item number four. And this is 1075 Francisco Boulevard East, Home to Suites and Hampton Inn and Suites Hotel. Request for an environmental design review, use permit and major subdivision lot merger for a project proposing to develop a 2.79 acre portion of a vacant property with a new 54-foot-high, 106,000 gross square foot hotel containing 185 rooms and development of a smaller 0.66 acre portion of the property with a vehicle storage. This is other improvements including landscaping, flood mitigation, establishment of easements. And this is file number ED1903819098. I will ask if staff can please refer to the report.
Sure.
So the project that's before you tonight includes a major subdivision to consolidate five continuous lots. A use permit request for a hotel project as well as a vehicle storage lot for one of the lots that will be part of the subdivision. An environmental and design review permits for the property, for the project, which is categorized as a major physical improvement on a vacant lot. To start with, I'll share the site plan. The first parcel one is, the request is to develop this parcel with a 185-room hotel building, total square footage of 106,000. The applicant is proposing 195 parking spaces with 16 electric vehicle parking spaces. 20 bicycle storage spaces are also proposed. The northern parcel, parcel two, is proposed to be used as a vehicle storage lot. There will be no physical structures proposed on this property, but there will be pavement and parking and a total of 4,497 square feet of landscape on that site. This slide shows the landscape improvements proposed on the properties. There's a total of 27,271 square feet of landscape throughout the property. The applicant is proposing a combination of trees, including eastern red buds, coast live oaks, drake elms and autumn blaze maples. Their applicant is also proposing a number of shrubs and grasses and ground covers throughout the property and also including bioswale plantings to accommodate the bioswale. All plantings will be low to moderate water usage and will be reviewed by the Marin Municipal Water District for compliance with their low water management program. This slide shows the elevations east and west of the project or facing east and west. And then this slide shows the north and south elevations. I will allow the applicant to share more of their slides and provide a better presentation in terms of the materials and colors to be used in some of the design elements for efficiency's sake. This is a photo simulation to provide you with some context on how this project fits on the site in relation to other developments surrounding the project site. And then this is another photo simulation giving you that same idea of that context with existing development. So the applicant, the project has been reviewed for consistency with our general plan and consistency with our zoning ordinance. There are a few land use, or a few policies that I want to point out. Land use policy LU20 is related to hotels, motels and inns. This land use policy identifies the desire to have visitor accommodating types uses because they are high tax generators and low traffic generators. And for that reason, the city council has identified that in our general plan as a use that is desired within our community. They are also providing additional benefit in that they provide job training programs within the community as well. Hotels, for this reason, hotels are not subject to certain development standards such as floor area ratio requirements. And there's a height bonus allowable for hotels. The applicant is not requesting a height bonus in this case, but it just gives you some idea of the value that our general plan places on hotel type of projects within our city. EV3, general plan policy EV3 identifies the desire to support and recognize tourism within our community and find strategy, look for strategies that support tourism, including the development of hotel projects within the city. And then general plan policy H14, adequate sites is related to the need to identify enough sites within the city to accommodate our RENA obligation. The purpose of this is to demonstrate that adequate sites have been zoned to meet the need during the eight-year RENA cycle. The project site was given a capacity of up to 63 units, is identified as an opportunity site. However, while the project eliminates that, this site is a possible opportunity site. The development of other projects within the city are good, will be made possible based on some projects that have been approved by the city recently, and these include 190 Mill Street, which provides 32 units of 100% extremely low income units. 1010 Northgate was approved last year. That provides 136 units, 28 of which would be within the below market rate category. 350 Marydale was recently approved. This was a rezoning and it identifies 41 units, nine of which would be below market rate units. And then lastly, I want to identify, I want to mention Los Gamos, which is not approved at this point, but has potential for developing up to 180 units with 36 below market rate units with the 20% affordability requirement. As I mentioned before, the general plan, the project has been evaluated for consistency with the general plan policies and a table has been provided as one of your attachments. There are a number of policies. I won't read them all out to you. But in general, the planning, the project is consistent with the general plan. Likewise, the project has been evaluated for consistency with our zoning code. The project complies with development standards for lot, lot size setbacks, building height, parking and landscaping. As I mentioned earlier, the project is not obligated to comply with the floor area ratio requirement. And then the project also provides the required performance standards identified under the site and use regulations, including refuse enclosures. The applicant will be required to pay an affordable housing fee at building permit issuance. The applicant is required to provide to comply with light and glare, mechanical equipment screening, noise standard requirements, site distance requirements and water efficient landscaping requirements. The project was reviewed by the design review board on two occasions. In January 2019, the project received conceptual design review. The applicant was provided with guidance on how to come back with a formal application with some changes, recommended changes. On March 20th, the design review board reviewed the application again and noted that the recommended changes have been made and recommended approval of the project. Identified three additional conditions of approval, including the submittal of a photometric study that recalculates the project that, to demonstrate that it includes the illuminated exterior wall sections. It also required the illuminated exterior wall sections need to be dimmable and include one shade of white and then require the submittal of mockups of exterior colors and that those be subject to field inspection prior to installation. Staff has received a couple of comment letters that were, have been forwarded to your commission. Some in support, some in opposition. The main concern with the opposition letter is that the project has the potential to cause noise during construction. In particular, the business owner that, that provided this concern is a recording studio. And staff believes that this is a legitimate concern. For that reason, staff is proposing an added condition of approval that requires the applicant to submit a, an estimated schedule for construction work and to continuously update that construction schedule so that the recording studio can make appropriate arrangements as needed. And so the condition of approval would read, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit an estimated construction schedule. This schedule shall be updated regularly to reflect expected changes. The schedule shall be provided to businesses within 300 feet of the project site and nearby businesses shall be informed when expected changes are made. So with that, the staff is recommending the planning commission adopt the resolution conditionally approving a tentative map, a use permit or use permits for the hotel project and the lot, vehicle storage lot and the associated environmental design reviews, adding conditions of approval requiring the construction schedule be submitted. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ally, could you show on a map where the proposed hotel will be relative to the recording studio?
So I think the recording studio is right in this area here. I don't know which building, but it's in this area. Can you see? My arrow?
I can, I can see your area arrow and I'm just, I'm trying to orient myself to this particular view just to get a
So this is Francisco Boulevard. This is Castro. This is a, from north looking south in a south, south direction. And let me see if I can.
Right, okay.
So this is the site here.
Okay.
These two. I think it might be this one. I believe the person that's concerned will be on the call. So we might be able to ask him as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few questions. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. I noticed that of the 195 parking spots, 16 will be for EV and I was wondering if a couple of questions. Is that about right proportionally to the, the total number of spaces? And then also, how is it decided the location for EV parking spots?
The 16 is the required. I believe there's a combination of requiring that some of the EV be in adjacent to the building in, so that it's providing some ADA EV charging opportunities as well. Other than that, I, I don't know that we have anything required. However, if there are particular locations that your commission is interested in, we can, this can certainly be part of your, your action.
Okay, thank you. I have some other questions. First of all, I, as I believe I read, it's the, the DRB would be finalizing approval of a, of colors. Is that right?
No, it would be staff looking at the mock colors prior to, prior to finalizing them. What typically will happen is that the colors and materials will be, or the colors will be painted on the wall as sample pieces, like swatches, larger swatches, and then staff will normally come to the site and determine whether the, the colors are appropriate. But it, it would normally be staff doing that review.
Okay, I thought I saw somewhere in there about DRB monitoring or making some kind of considerations there and it was just without seeing any samples. I was curious just on a pragmatic level how that might play out, but it sounds like if staff is really, you know, more involved in that, then I mean, that's fine with me. I was just curious. With respect to the height of, of the hotel, is it, would you, is it commensurate with the heights of, I mean, I guess this is kind of an apples and oranges question. But is, is it, is there any relevance to, to comparing the height of this hotel with, with some other hotels in San, in San Rafael, such as the one just, just down the road from this one?
We did not do that type of evaluation. I'm, yeah, I'm not really sure what the difference is. I, I can tell you that the one that was recently approved in downtown is similar in height. But no, I don't, I don't have kind of a comparison with other hotels.
Okay, just noting that is, it is indeed one of the taller buildings. You know, that's been brought before the planning commission. Is there any update with respect to the photometric studies, the study that the DRB mentioned?
No, there hasn't been any recent submittals. The request would be that it would be submitted prior to building permit issuance is what we would normally require.
Okay, so there's plenty of time then. And I noticed on the final page of the report, there was a letter from Argonaut Company. And I, and I was wondering what the relationship of, is of Argonaut Company to this project?
I, I don't know. That would be a good question for the applicant, perhaps?
Very often when, when there's a letter such as that, there's some other, my educated guess is there's some other story going on. Not to say it wasn't well-written or potentially valid. I just was wondering if there was a story behind the, the letter.
Then that would be a good question to ask the applicant.
Okay. And then with respect to this proposed condition of approval regarding the estimated construction schedule, can you just explain on a, on a very practical level, what happens if it turns out the estimations aren't correct and, because that could cause business disruption as Ari Rios is, you know, concerned about. And it could cost that person and recording studio real money.
Yeah, I mean, the, the thought is that one way of doing with, doing, doing this would be to not require it and then there is no expectation at all and, and so it's more of, you know, let's see what happens and the, the the neighboring studio could have scheduled events and then realize that because of construction activity, they're not able to record that day. With the schedule, with the estimated schedule, the, the idea is that then the neighbor could make plans or arrangements to have certain recordings be during a specific time period. And then the other part of that condition of approval that I was recommending is that it's understood that there may be changes as there normally is with construction schedules, so it would be an estimated construction schedule and as things change, you know, as, as construction gets completed at certain phases that the applicant would then provide an updated schedule and then always just notify the neighbors, you know, keep them apprised when those changes occur. Is, that was kind of the idea. And then the other thing that I would add is, in speaking with the neighbor today, one of the primary concerns was the possibility of pile driving and the applicants have confirmed that pile driving is not part of their construction work. And so that was something that the applicant or the neighbor was feeling more comfortable with. But I'll let him speak to that if he, if he attends. So I think the way staff perceived it is something, some sort of schedule is better than no schedule at all. I'm not sure if that answers.
Not that I would doubt that, you know, the, the people constructing this project would, would not be able to provide, you know, fairly good estimates or would would not be able to provide, you know, fairly good estimates or that I don't have faith in them. I'm simply asking because there is a, there was a situation years ago here on the planning commission that we saw that had exactly that issue. And it was very, it was quite contentious out at Peacock Gap. And I think the building inspector got involved and I just wanted to make sure that there was some kind of a framework in place rather than just, oh, well, you know. As long as there's some assurance that there's, you know, there's something that that could be done. I mean, usually it's just a matter of, you know, neighbors talking, working it out. But just in the odd event that that maybe things don't work out as smoothly, that there's, there's something that that can be done.
Yeah, I mean, and to speak to that. I mean, there's, again, I would just reference that we would be asking for updates regularly. And if there's an expected change that the applicant is, one of the elements of that condition of approval is that the applicant would update that schedule regularly so that there's some sense of what, when things are happening, when machinery is going to be on the site, that sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question about the proposed parking lot. It looks like it's paved. Is that correct? It will be paved?
That's correct. Are you talking, referring to parcel two?
Yeah.
The storage lot, yes, it will be paved and there will be landscaping.
And I don't, I don't, we kind of got the shunk and down version. Are there a drainage plan and bio swales anywhere? I don't see anywhere.
There are. See them in the landscape plan. But I can bring up the. Perhaps when the applicant's doing his presentation, I can dig up the that portion of the site plan and share it with you. That's what I'll have to dig through.
Thank you.
Plans.
Anyone else?
I guess I just have a question about the purpose of storage. Why isn't it called the extension of the parking lot? I'm just curious if it has another purpose.
I'm sorry, what was your question? Why is?
Is it just an extension of the parking lot for the hotel? Or do they have a different purpose in mind for storage of vehicles?
Got it. They, yeah, they, the purpose of that is to provide an option for leasing back that that parcel to, right now, it's the entire site is being used as car storage. And the applicant is is leaving that as an option for leaseback to to allow car storage to continue to operate there. I get over for existing vehicle dealers. So it would be, it would be vehicle storage. That piece would continue to serve as vehicle storage.
Any other commissioners? I don't think so. Ellie, my question is really quick. This is a major subdivision. So is it a major subdivision? Because there's five parcels that are being merged and then they're dividing it differently or subdividing it into a different size or a different dimension? Or why is this a major subdivision?
Because it's, it's, it includes more than five parcels. And yet there's, it's typically something like this could be done through a lot line adjustment. But because it's more than four parcels, it goes into that next level and it's five lots or more. Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I think we will invite the applicant to present as well, please.
Hi, all. Thank you so much for for having me, especially under these really difficult circumstances. I really appreciate they're still able to operate. I'm pretty shocked and surprised, but very pleased at the same time to be able to keep this moving. I can share my screen here. Okay, can you all see that? Okay, so. This is our site. This would be a view from Francisco from the northwest side. It's the main entrance to the hotel. You can see from the hotel, you know, it is taller than most of the things around. Typically, the surrounding buildings are about, you know, 20 feet, you know, somewhere between 15 and 20 feet in height, often they're a single story. Most of the neighbors are, you know, car parts and shops. And, you know, a couple mercantile stores around, such as the recording studio. But the vast majority are sort of more industrial use. The the project here is a Hilton brand. We have two brands in the same hotel. It's a Hampton Inn and Suites, which is the four-story building or four-story portion you sort of see on the right. And a Home Two, which is the portion on the left. This allows for a better bifurcation of, you know, uses. The Home Two is a little bit more of an extended stay. And the Hampton and Suites is a little bit more of a family product. That way it allows the better occupancy rates to maintain that. It's not not quite so bumpy changes here. The building itself, you know, is 54 feet and 185 rooms, 195 parking spaces, which meets the required code that San Rafael likes. And the mentioning of the EV parking spaces, while we already meeting the minimum and generally we locate those pretty close to the entrance, generally just giving a little benefit to those to those cars. On the site here, Ellie mentioned that the recording studio, I believe, was up in this building here. And it actually, I spoke to him earlier, it might actually be across the canal. He might actually be on the lower side here. As you can see, we have entry from both Francisco Boulevard and also Castro. We have an easement through this portion here to maintain rights for just to drive through. And also it helps with fire access. You had asked about the use of the the second lot. The person, the previous owner sold this lot and they have the option to purchase that portion back. So that was a requirement of the sale. He may or may not take that option. So we are still complying with all the requirements from planning guidelines to provide the paving in that area and also the minimum amount of landscaping. Here we show the the first floor. We have a mix of uses. Our our yellow portion is sort of the back of house. Our blue portion here has the guest rooms. And then you can see the public amenities and sort of that purplish pink color there. The the brands share a breakfast room and lounge. We have a good-sized meeting room as well as, and we also have an indoor pool on the right side, along with the fitness center as well. As we move up the building here, you start to see these sort of fill-in rooms. The white portion at the knuckle of the building, you can see is a double-height space that is for the the public space. And you, as you march out the building, it continues again. And then on the fifth floor, you know, we cut it back a little bit. These are mainly Home Two Suites, give a little bit of a difference for the building and then the right number of rooms for this sort of area. We also imagine at some point we might want to have a rooftop deck here. So we do have proper fire access and clearances. And I think it'd be really nice amenity once it were to go in. As Ellie showed before, this is the the west and north elevation here. And you can see the difference in height for the building as well. We are following FEMA and San Rafael guidelines to pull the building up, I believe, almost seven feet from where the land is currently to get to the at least 11 feet above sea level and flood plain. So you can see at the lower image there, it sort of drops off gradually to the right to meet the sidewalk at Francisco. And these are the other views, the backside. The top is the east elevation and you could see the the glassy portion that goes around the pool area. These are just similar sections you can see going through the building. Here you can see our material palette. We have exterior wood slats. They may be real wood, could be a wood look material that's a little more resistant to the the salt in the area in that area. In the lower portion, we have a stacked stone baseball. And then for the main field area, we have a white cement plaster finish. And then surrounding the exterior wood slats, we have a sort of a dark metal frame. Once again, this is the the look off of Francisco Boulevard. One of the things that the design review board, you know, they sort of had excellent comments and gave us the opportunity to push the design a little bit more. They actually recommended that we, they want to see it even more. So it has excellent views from the highway and Francisco. So we were able to use our design here and modify it to sort of be, you know, we call it sort of a beacon of light here. As you're coming, this will be the view coming from 580, moving sort of to the to the west. So during the daytime, these wood slats are a nice, you know, warm wood color. Of course, in the nighttime, this portion that points toward the highway is sort of a beacon. And it has backlit LEDs. So the the whole thing should glow as a light box. And the other wood slots around around the rest of the building will still be that warm wood color.
I might just briefly cut in, I'm not sure if I'm following or I don't know if you're you're, you're going through a presentation right now. I'm just seeing a picture of the lot.
Are you not seeing that? Okay. Let me see if.
That's odd. I'm seeing a picture of the building.
I am.
Yeah, me too.
I'm also.
Okay, you're seeing the picture of the building with the sort of white portion on the left-hand side lit up?
Yes.
Yeah, the one you're describing.
Okay, okay, excellent. And this would be a view sort of from the backside, more more corner showing where our a pool would be in the backside, you know, we carry the, we carry the design all the way around the building. So it shouldn't be, you know, it should be attractive from all different sides. As Ellie showed before, you can see the view here has, you know, excellent view coming from the highway. We would like to sort of, you know, be sort of a homecoming. When you're coming home along the highway, kind of marks your entrance as like a gate to the city. So Design Review Board had suggested that and we really enjoyed the comment. And we hope we have achieved that. And this is the view from the coming the other direction. And you can see with this, you know, we are meeting the landscape requirements, which, you know, once all the trees are grown, will be much, much more flush than than the surrounding areas, I think, should be a really nice addition to the area. And and that's about it for views. Ellie wanted me to keep it short, so I will open up the questions. I'm excited to hear your comments and questions.
Great, thank you, Steve. All right, well, we will bring this back and open it up to the commissioners if there's any questions for the applicant. Oh, yeah, I wanted to, I was, I was curious who Argonaut Company is.
I don't even know what you're referring to, honestly. Was that one of the letters of support that we received?
Yeah, yeah, I was curious. It looked positive reviews for sure.
Okay, I'm glad to hear it. You know, I'm the architect, I'm with Stanton Architecture. And I don't know that I had direct contact with any of the people providing letters of support. So I couldn't tell you who they are, honestly.
Well, that's great news. Good letter of support. Thanks.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I think I can answer that question. I did have a chance to look back. And that that, or the letter, that's the last attachment of the staff report from Argonaut is Jeff Rhodes, who is a planner and architect. He actually does serve on our general plan steering committee and he's involved in many local groups. So it sounds like he was just a letter providing support for the project. Whether he has any affiliation or participation with the project, I don't know. I'm not aware of that, but he is a local resident and business owner.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I still have a question with that second lot, with the option to buy from the previous owner. So how does that work? Does that go in perpetuity? And let's say in the meantime, he's not deciding to buy it back. So do you have plans for that space?
Not currently. We want to make sure it met all code in its current form. However, you know, it would be, immediately it might be overflow parking. But if he did not take that option, we would, you know, we would be open to other options, especially moving forward with the advent of, you know, Lyft and Uber. And everyone is projecting, you know, lower parking requirements in the future that we may not need, you know, that that may not serve much of a purpose. So we might look at future options, but we designed it as if that was going to stay in perpetuity.
My concern is that given the parking shortage in that area, that one of the things you would start doing is renting it for very high prices per car in a community that tends to be very, you know, low income.
Gotcha. I don't think they're projecting, I mean, the reason for the lot is really how the lot is used now, it's overflow parking for the dealership. And if we were to, you know, retain that portion lot, I don't see that really happening. It's never been mentioned by by ownership or anyone I'm aware of.
Do you know where that overflow, the the current use, the dealer using that? Do you know where those cars are going to be going?
I do not, actually. That's a good question.
That is a good question. And and I was wondering also, though, I was the liaison at the DRB meeting for the color palettes. And that white still, how do you feel about that stark cold white everywhere?
I mean, I imagine in reality, it's a little bit warmer. I think the renderings make it a little bit too stark white. We're happy to warm it up a little bit where we're not married to the bright, bright white.
Thank you.
Other questions?
One more comment. I guess I have had a many friends that have had the opportunity to live in a place like this while they're working there, whether they're in the maintenance department or just the reception area. And I was wondering if if that's something you guys would consider. I know we don't have that or need to require it, but it's just a very good, I guess, community benefit if employees have the chance to do that.
It's a really interesting idea. I can bring that to owner and see if that's something that might interest them. You know, I think it might, you know, it always depends on finances, but it's a, it's a nice benefit. And especially in the current atmosphere where they have, you know, open rooms, you never know. But I might suggest that.
Yes, especially employees in this type of businesses. Their salaries tend to not be as as high, so it's a very good benefit.
Do you, do you guys plan on using that public space for any, for outside users other than the facility or the building itself?
Probably not. It's really sort of a three-star hotel and it has, it has some breakfast service, but it's not the four-star with full, with a full food service, with a full restaurant in it. So it's a little bit more difficult to bring in, you know, very large groups for that purpose. Also, you know, if there were a true restaurant in there, we would be having too much. We would be having a parking issue, being able to add that to our parking numbers. We do imagine that the people using the hotel, you know, will use some of those services. We're hoping to have a rooftop bar on the top and then also that good-sized meeting room space. We, you know, believe the people in the hotel will be using that. And then, you know, we will be, of course, open into renting it to the community and filling that space. But I don't think there's a huge. a huge influx of people coming in, using it otherwise that are not really staying in the hotel as much.
I couldn't tell. What's the capacity of those rooms?
There's 185 guest rooms.
No, the the meeting space, the the public meeting space.
That's a good question. I would have to look up my plans to see there. It's a
Ballpark. I want we're not taping.
Yeah, it's just a it's a couple of thousand square feet. So it's a it would be like a junior junior ballroom, not a true ballroom.
And so the public space would be allowed for community engagement. Is it? That's kind of what that community space is intended to be?
Absolutely. Yeah. So the community is welcome to come in. We imagine, you know, renting it to smaller groups. You know, they would like to have a little bit of sort of drink service. The hotel would allow that sort of like a little bit that the front desk might even run a little bit of beer wine. So having mingling and little community events would be perfectly fine. And also, especially if we're able to use the roof and use that space, that might be a really nice space for that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners before we open this up for the public public comment? No, okay. Then we will. I'll ask staff if we can help open this up for public comment, please.
Yes, thank you. So if you are participating in my conference call and wish to speak, please press star nine to raise hand. While I wait for participants to press star nine, I also request for any public comments to be submitted through YouTube. Make sure to include public comment in all caps at the start of your comment. So we do have one conference call comment. So I'm going to be unmuting them now. And you are now unmuted. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Ari Arias. I'm the owner of the studio next to oh, I'm hearing myself.
If you can please speak up and turn off your YouTube feedback.
Okay. All right, maybe this will work better.
Yes.
You hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm the owner of the studio next door and Stephen had it right. The building is on the bay side of the plan as it stands. So I'm very concerned as to noise. I mean, it's great that they're that they're willing to put a schedule, but as we all know, construction changes. And I if I'm booked, if my studio is booked and and there's more noise than expected, I'll lose that session, very likely can lose the project. We start a project that goes for a year. So if I can't start a project when they need to start, I not only lose that that portion, but I lose the entire project for the year. So it's potentially catastrophic loss of income for me. So I don't know how to handle that. I'm very relieved that they're not going to drive piles because I know from experience that that would make it impossible for me to do anything at all. I don't know what can be worked out as far as their construction schedule. We had gelati in that lot with no permit. I don't know if anyone was around for that. They were grinding away all the all the the asphalt and the concrete that was coming off of all the highway rebuilding that was done. And we couldn't even see the hills from my front door. I walk out and it was huge mountains of stuff. So, you know, I I came forward and the city was awesome. You guys got them out of there. So I'm I'm very anxious to have another repeat of heavy machinery out there making all kind of noise and then walking out my door and seeing this huge building right there. You can't see anything, all the views of the hills, the way that the building is proposed to be oriented. It blocks all views from anywhere from my area out. Whereas and and the empty lot, which I understand they might not even be able to to build on is on the other end, whereas if the building was oriented the other way, we'd have more open space from from all the all the, you know, area towards the bridge. And it's further away for the heaviest construction is going to be that five story section and all the all the, you know, in ground work that has to be done for foundation and stuff. My limited experience in construction. So there's that. There's also a canal there that drains directly to the bay. And I haven't heard anybody say anything about that at all. So that's an environmental issue. And I I've I've been told that there's the environmental review has been waived because of an infill project, which personally, I don't understand what that means. A project this size not having any environmental review seems wrong to me. So there's that. I mean, I I'm very concerned about loss of income for me. I'm barely hanging on between COVID and the state of the music industry. So and I'm one of the very, very last full service, large recording studios left in Northern California. I mean, Fantasy is gone, the plant is gone. Just to name a couple you might may have known, they're gone. And so I'm trying to be protective of my life's work here and don't want to stand in the way of of progress for the city, but you know, this is a huge structure. There's nothing 55 feet anywhere around that I can think of. So to have that like right outside my doors is 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 a is a shock to the system. Don't know exactly what else to say.
Thank you, Ari. Thank you for speaking. Rafi, do we have any other public comment?
Sorry about that.
You're all. Thank you.
So no, there are no other phone calls and I do not see anybody else in the chat room who has asked for public comment. I would note that there are two additional letters that I just received a copy of that were previously submitted but did not make it in the packet. One was from Stephanie Plant of CPI Developers, local property owner and business owner, supporting the project. And the second one is from Cynthia Murray of the North Bay Leadership Council, also expressing support for the project. So with that, that would conclude the public comments that we have.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will close the public comments and I will bring this back to the commissioners and see if we have any follow up questions. We can I can do a roll call if we want or initially allow any commissioners that have questions for staff or the applicant or other thoughts. We can kind of open that for discussion first.
I guess I'll start with a follow up comment to the caller's question regarding waiving the environmental review. Ali or Rafi, I was wondering if you can just spend a minute explaining the reasons why and the the definition of infill and how our hands are tied because that's a state mandate?
Yeah, so the project qualifies for an infill exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15332. The applicant did submit technical studies that demonstrate that they would be able to address greenhouse gases through and through implementation of deep green. And because we have a climate action plan and they were willing to comply with our climate action plan, they were they qualified for for that exemption as well. So we just we went through the the infill study, infill exemptions requirements, and we were able to confirm that they were they would not be considered and for their environmental review would not be necessary because of their ability to comply with with that section of SEQA. I is there because it's located in a urban location that they're they're this is the reason they qualify. I am. Is there another? Is there anything that you want me to elaborate on or?
No, no, that's that's great. I think it's important that people understand why we're not doing that environmental analysis.
Yeah, yeah. So the California Environmental Quality Act identifies projects that are that qualify for exemption and projects that need to go do further environmental review. And this is one of those projects that because it's an infill project qualifies for an exemption.
Any other commissioners?
I guess I'll go with another thought about the caller's comment on the noise. I know that there's there are limited amount of restrictions you can put on a construction site as far as limiting noisy activities during a certain period of time. But that's something to think about or have a discussion with a contractor once chosen. If the person's business hours are mainly from eight to five, I assume, then would this applicant be granted extended hours of construction to do the most noisy tasks from seven to eight or five to seven in the evening? That that's a compromise as far as extension of construction activities. I I know that we we did some of those restrictions on on the Marin General Hospital, construction on the of the extension, and that was helpful to the neighborhood. But just to rule out any noise during a construction of this magnitude, it's it's pretty challenging.
Yeah. Were you helping for a comment on that?
I guess it's mainly for the caller to understand that there's very while there's some things we can do as far as conditioning, the schedule, once the contractor is chosen and we get a construction and facing plan. There's things we can, there's things I keep saying we, but it's the city. I can impose during building permit approvals given your noise ordinance and things. So just a comment so that he knows where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I would follow up on that with Commissioner Davidson. I think the idea of the adding the condition of advanced notice, advanced written notice of the construction schedule is helpful. But I think also a discussion with the applicant and the construction team when it's when it's being proposed as to working with the neighborhood, not only this neighbor, but with the neighborhood about the scheduling of it. And whether we can, whether the city can work on expanded hours, alternative times. But in essence, I think it's a communication issue that needs to be that should be considered. I know there was also, he also raised a question about the site and the location of the building being where it is. I don't feel like I heard from any from the applicant or staff as to why the configuration of the site is the way it is. And maybe that would be helpful if there's a somewhat brief reasoning for the way it was laid out.
Yeah, I mean, I would ask the applicant to provide comment on that. I know that that was a comment that was asked during the design review phase, but the entire the full design review board did not. There wasn't a consensus consensus on that. I think there was just a comment that, you know, why this orientation, but there really wasn't clarity on why that was necessary to have that. But I think that would be a good question for the applicant to address.
Yeah, there's there's definitely a lot of consideration into the orientation of the building. We definitely took many attempts at different ways it could be laid out. And this seemed to be the most efficient. One of the things that happens with this building is because we are near flood plain and we have to raise up to 11 feet is that when you enter, you have to start to raise the land up. And and if you turn the building different ways, then that starts to raise the building in ways you don't want to see it as in, you know, the building close to the walk, you know, this way, you know, there's almost a normal ground level that you see in windows. If that were dropped all the way down, you would have a, you know, 13 foot wall right next to the sidewalk that's blank and filled with the dirt that you couldn't really work with. The other consideration is always in site planning is always just parking. So enabled to in order to get as much parking as we're required to do, there's definitely some gymnastics and, you know, shortening parts of the building and different layouts to be able to have the most efficient parking going around. You can see how every lane around the parking is double loaded. We don't have a single loaded portion there. So coming to the most efficient building and parking and orientation of the building is sort of the result of how that came.
Thank you. Any other general questions or discussion topics? If not, maybe I will ask if we are at the point now, maybe we can have the commissioners go through, present their thoughts on this before we do a roll call. If you'd like, I can start. I will. I'll start calling names out. I'll take it from the start, Commissioner Davidson, since you're the first one on my screen.
My opinion is that this is a good project for an infill site and it does fit the neighborhood as far as something that is needed and and I don't see it as out of the norm for bulk and mass. I understand there's not an environmental review, but I I I support it. Again, the comments I threw at the applicant was proposing to have employees leave on site and and really encourage the project proponent to have a conversation with the studio owner. And I'm sure they can come up with a plan between the two of them and and it could be a win win situation. But yeah, like I said, I I support it. I I don't have any any concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm just going to go down the list. Commissioner Lockren.
I am in concurrence with Commissioner Davidson. I I like the project and given that it's consistent with the general plan, the zoning, it's consistent with development standards. I I'm in support of the project. I like I like the design of it. I'm glad that it's it's a bit bold. You know, I think about as you come into San Rafael down 580. If you're coming, I guess, west on 580, it will be nice to have something in that area of town that that makes a statement. And so I like the project.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lubomirski.
Yep.
There we go.
Yeah, I I I like the articulation of the building. It's going to be a big building. There's no hiding that. I'm not a fan of the stark white, but I'm not going to vote against the building because of its color. But I have concerns about just it kind of it being a big goal. Also, it'd be nice if there were some taller trees. Live oaks are about 25, 30 feet. It'd be nice to have some, you know, trees that would maybe shield some of the bulk and mass of the building more than the species that are called out. But no, it's needed. And I think um than the species that are called out. But no, it's needed and I think um it would be nice um if we could have some local use of maybe that parking. I know that's not gonna happen, but if it would relieve some of the pressure off the uh the neighborhood for parking. I know it's probably gonna end up uh another lot for a dealership and they need cars too. But you know, it's a good project. I I'm in support of it.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Schaefer.
Thank you. Uh, I like the design. Well, as for the um the color, I have full faith and trust in the staff. It sounds like they're gonna be having um uh material say and it that uh the right time. Uh, DRB has has addressed other uh aesthetic issues of the of the uh the project that I, you know, I that I think they've done a fine job and from what I can tell and and uh I think that the the tree cover is is adequate, a little sparse, but 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 adequate. Um, as for the sound issue with the recording studio, I know that neither the applicant nor the contractor want to be responsible for this guy's lost business. And so they really have not just a neighborly incentive, but a financial incentive to help make sure that things work out in a good way. So I'm gonna just uh trust that that um that that will work out. And uh if it doesn't, then you know, the uh things will play out in in a manner that eventually it will it will get resolved one way or another. Um, not that I'm pessimistic that it won't, but um experiences that it it will work out. So I don't see that as a problem. And in any event, um, the benefit of this project um I mean, is is so great uh that that's really a small issue uh among uh the the heavy weight of all the great benefits that this project uh has. Um, the design elements, I like the breaking up of the mass. I like that construction alone is gonna bring 243 construction jobs. We've got um more than $40 million in local business revenue is uh during construction alone is is in, you know, it looks like it's gonna be brought in. Uh, it's gonna help with the major impact of tourism. Low traffic, no significant effects on traffic uh anticipated uh per normal with hotels. Um, I mean, it just seems like all systems go and it like a good project. Um, it's actually refreshing to see that with such a a substantial project uh that um there really isn't much of much opposition to speak of. I think that's really notable uh and is indicative of a of a good and well-thought-out project. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Uh, and Commissioner Samutzi.
Thank you. Um, I think possibly one reason why we haven't seen much opposition is is just due to the specific location and where it resides relative to to other neighborhoods. Um, but I think that, you know, I'm I'm not gonna reiterate the comments, thinking in favor of this. I think that um at a high level, this is a is a fairly strong project. You know, just looking at the at the general planning site, I did pretty extensively, um, which is a kind of uh you know, looking at from a standpoint of what are general objective planning standards and while we did reference the infill near transit, which is a priority in the general plan. Or rather infill projects in general, which is part of the general plan. I think there are two things that kind of came up to me or sort of came to mind that I don't think that were were resolved. And I don't think that the um that the this is necessarily within the arch purview of the architect. So I don't know if we necessarily resolve them at this particular venue, which uh I don't know, depending on how important those particular questions were made. They made a difference, uh at least in in the current um voting situation. So um the 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 piece that to me stands out is we start, we need to start thinking about just in general. Um, so it's not necessarily picking on this project in particular. But I think um we, you know, we do have a mandate within the general plan itself to look at like energy, conservation, sustainability. Um, so you know, with that with that in mind, I tend to look at projects with a sort of more lens of um while the like the general optics are good on the project, I think there are certain things with the rest of sustainability that I don't think were necessarily addressed in much depth. Um, with regards to like, you know, use of renewable energy sources, solar panels, things like that, how they're gonna leverage. Not just, um, yeah, we have inputs that they should be put on the roof at some later date, but um sort of some acknowledgement or awareness of like, what is the actual um energy impact? Given that, you know, we're gonna be using the same, you know, water resources and power resources as everybody else in the city. What is the measurable impact that's gonna have on those, you know, particularly when it comes to the fact that it made a difference, at least in the we're gonna have to get our power out of this every year and so we're somebody operating infrastructure, which is likely not what happened. So those are, that is one thing that I would like to see. Um, not just, not just from from this particular project, but just going forward, just some awareness of a part of applicants that are engaging in some of these large-scale projects. They have done some sort of math around what is the actual impact gonna be? Not not so much at our perspective, but just sort of like, how are you yourself paying attention to figuring out how much water people are gonna consume in this or how much power. So that's just, that's getting, that's one thing. And the other pieces, um, you know, we can have a piece in our general plan, in our sort of um neighborhood housing section around bicycle and pedestrian friendly streets. Um, now I know that that's kind of like a tricky line for projects because they're focused more on sort of the development of the property itself. Uh, because there is some impact in terms of traffic that's gonna happen in terms of employees and even in the short term, there was construction, you know, we we heard from the from the from the neighborhood business around potential impacts to 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 his business. Uh, but there should shouldn't be some sort of acknowledgement or awareness of like, what is the um, what is the the general footprint that's been created in terms of um, you know, additional vehicle mileage. Again, because this is not the IR, it's a particular point, we're not necessarily much of a full-blown study. But again, I do wanna see some awareness that, okay, what what are the nutrients that we are generating? How are we moving and get that and kind of get it in front of that? I think it shows good faith in the part of the project if they are to acknowledge that, yeah, you know, you have a large parking lot. Um, that potentially means that there's gonna be X footprint. These are the things that we're doing to ensure that, you know, this is still pedestrian-friendly or still um cycling-friendly, or at least we're contributing to the creation of that space, given that that is a focus of our of our general plan. And I think tied into that is sort of the the connection with um employees commuting. I mean, we do have, this is close enough to, I would say, the transit hub um in downtown San Rafael, that there should be some thought or consideration as to like, you know, what are ways that, you know, can sort of help, particularly given that this is sort of a a larger employer, what are some of the the things that we're doing to to ensure that some of these public transit uh infrastructure is being utilized and and getting to make cars off the road in general as possible. Um, so those are the things to that that I would say um are kind of holes in the application process. Again, I don't know how much uh leeway the architect would have to necessarily answer those questions. I think this is something that the actual developer or owner um should 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 speak to as well. But those would be things that until I got more clarity, I would be less comfortable simply giving it a a a clear green light, even though everything else looks good to me.
It's great, thank you. I think really good comments. Uh, so mine, yeah, not to kind of reiterate what everyone said. Um, I think for me, one of the the challenges for me is that this is sort of on the outskirts of the of the canal in a somewhat private neighborhood. I don't know what the connection will be with it from the color palette through the size and the bulk and mass to just sort of this being, you know, like you said, a three-star hotel that may have folks in and out. So that's a little bit, that was initially a little bit challenging for me. I love that idea of if you hire folks, offer them a place to stay potentially uh or incorporate some sort of training, uh especially with the community, because that seems like that would be a great fit. I think to Commissioner Samuji's point of sort of these broader scale questions and issues. Because it's an infill project, my take on it is you're raising the exact kind of questions that an EIR MND would be looking at, you know, and everything from the pedestrian incorporation and and sort of traffic and all of that through the sustainability, the energy use. I think um doesn't get looked at in this kind of project, which is a little bit challenging. But I do like that idea of basically what is a project using, you know, what's the energy you're taking? How are you kind of taking a bit from the community and what are you going to do to or or what's the data behind it and and gives us a better understanding. So it may not be something that can be addressed here just because of the limitations on SEQA on this project, but I think those are really good points. I think ultimately I do support this, although I am concerned about the neighbor. But as Commissioner Schaefer said, there's gonna be ways for them to work it out friendly, hopefully. And um options that can be done. So those are, those are my thoughts. Anyone else have any last before I'll see if staff wants to take roll call? No? Okay. Ally, if you can take roll call or I'm sorry, somebody wants to uh make a motion on this?
I'll give it a shot. I'll make a motion to approve the environmental and design review, use permit and major subdivision lot merger for property 1075 Francisco Boulevard East. And um I believe there was some additional condition of approval to request the contract construction schedule be provided.
Yes, would you like Peter read that again or?
Please.
Yes, for the record. Thank you.
I'm afraid you're gonna say yes. So prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit an estimated construction schedule. The schedule shall be updated regularly to reflect expected changes. The schedule shall be provided to businesses within 300 feet of the project site and nearby businesses shall be informed of any expected changes.
So I'll move with that added condition.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second with the added condition. Any additional deliberation? I see none. Okay. Ally, if you could take the roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lockren? Commissioner Lockren, I might be muted. Yes. Um, Commissioner Lubomirski? Commissioner Lubomirski?
Um.
Um, Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Samutzi?
Yes.
And Chairman Cotto?
Yes.
So this decision is final unless appealed to the city council within 10 cal- within five calendar days. Oh, 10 calendar days, sorry, um because of the tentative map. Um, the uh appeal period ends Friday, May 22nd at 5:00 PM. Anyone wishing to appeal the decision should contact the city clerk by email at um Lindsay Lara at cityofSanRafel.org. That is L I N D S A Y dot L A R A at cityofSanRafel.org or by phone at 415-485-3066. And that way you will be able to make arrangements on filing an appeal.
Great, thank you. And thank you to the applicant for being here tonight. Okay, I'll we'll move on. Ask for director's report, please.
Okay, I have a very short director's report. Um, the next meeting is scheduled for May 26th, but I believe we have no items for that day, so we will likely be canceled. Um, and the meeting after that would be June 23rd, where I actually have an item. Um, 2134 Street is expected to go that day. It's an increase in the size of a restaurant in downtown. I wanted to also inform you that 104 Schaefer was um appealed to the city council and that's expected to be heard by the city council in June. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. And are there any uh communications from other commissioners? Any updates they want to provide?
Uh, yeah, I have an update. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I believe if I believe my my seat is up um next month, so I don't know, this may or may not be my last uh meeting, actually. I'm I'm not seeking to renew, so.
I'm gonna ask uh Rafi to check his binder, because I do not have the binder here. I know that we have reached out to um uh that we have advertised that there might be an opening. Um, and I don't know what the status is of that. Rafi, do you have anything to add related to um the status of our solicitation of for um for the next term?
Yes, uh, so with with the vacancy that was left after Commissioner Shoper's departure, um and Commissioner Schaefer has indicated he will not be seeking reapportment, unfortunately for us. Um, they have uh city clerk has opened uh advertisement for planning commission positions and accepting applications. I don't have the deadline handy. Um, but I think within the next couple of weeks to month, it will be, applications will be compiled and interviews will be held and appointments will be made by the council. And Commissioner Schaefer's term is uh through June of this year.
Okay, through June.
One more meeting with with uh Commissioner Schaefer.
Okay, I was I wasn't sure if it was mid-June or late-June, so, okay, great.
Yeah.
Maybe even mid-July now, right now. We don't, you know. It's COVID time. It's all different now. 2021, what's what's another year? Okay, thank you for letting us know and that's, yeah, that's a bummer for us. But um
For sure.
Well, you have, you get one more with me then.
Anyone else? Any other updates?
I just really quick, wanted to thank staff and I I wanna tell you how impressed I am for figuring out all of this um online meetings and comments through the phone and YouTube. I know for myself, I went, I almost went nuts trying to figure out Zoom the first time. So I can only imagine the work that goes on behind the scenes for this to work out so smoothly. That's that's awesome. Thank you, guys. I know that's a lot of work.
Yeah, uh, a very big thank you to our city clerk, Lindsay Lara, who spearheaded this entire Zoom initiative and uh she'd been assisted by Thomas Wong from our Public Works Department and uh Ben um from from our IT department. They have really put this all together and made it possible for us, so.
And a big thank you to you guys. You guys have been awesome and very willing to do this. It's it's helpful. So thanks to you guys as well. Planning commissioners and chair.
Yeah, no, I agree. Thanks to staff and everyone. I have a feeling uh yeah, and my daughter's only interrupted a few tons a night, so.
I Aldo agrees we're awesome.
Yeah. I actually wanted to know where where Shingy is tonight, because I have a feeling he's uh maybe uh remote somewhere, but that's all right. I won't put him on the spot.
I'll just say that I'm I'm in the woods.
Nice.
Good enough.
That's how I feel.
Lots of trees between me and the next city. Uh, I do, I do have one thing. I don't know the best way to distribute this in light of um sort of uh communication laws uh for public officials. Um, but I was finally able to get through all 560 something pages of the general plan um to kind of pull together sort of my thoughts on potential of effective communication law standards that are sort of something or um uh community-based outside of design standards. Um, Alicia and Rafi, I just sent both of you um just sort of the the share invite the uh the Google Docs. I don't know if it makes sense to distribute this to the other commissioners or how might that work? But I thought that might be sort of an interesting thing. Just one of basically an analysis of um the Assembly Bill 101. Um, what what leeway it gives us as a city um to create our own standards and sort of what existing frameworks we can leverage. What, what leeway it gives us as a city, um, to create our own standards and sort of what existing frameworks we can leverage, immediately and sort of what are some potential recommendations for, for things to take one step further? It's just basically everything. So it's not super long, but it's kind of, it's kind of dense.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I think that maybe Rafi and I can, um, discuss and we can figure out how to, what, you know, what steps to take in terms of distribution. Um, but thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Okay. I think, uh, unless there's anyone else, thank you, everyone. Thanks for staff. Again, great job tonight. So we will adjour, adjourn this at, uh, 9:07 PM. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, good night.
Good night.